The Council's Policy Committee shall come to order. This is its regular meeting of September 14, 2011. This morning, we have from the committee Vice Chairman Carroll, members Baisa, Cochran, and Couch. The Chair excuses, members Mateo, Victorino, White, and Pontanilla. We have a very aggressive agenda, members, so depending on time, we may not be able to finish the full business of today's requirements. We have requests for testimony this morning, members, and so we shall take public testimony at this time. The rules for testimony is that when your name is called, please come forward to our podium to the left of me. Please state your name for the record. If you are representing any organization, we request that you share that information. You have three minutes to give your testimony. We will assist you with your testimony with a lighting system that when you begin your testimony, the green light will go on. And like any intersection, when the yellow light goes on, it will indicate you have 30 seconds to conclude. When the red light goes on, means your time has ended, and the Chair will stop your testimony. If you have written testimony, the committee is also very much open to receiving your written comments, and we are happy to distribute it to all members of the committee. Saying that, with the beginning of testimony this morning, the first person is Chisa Lee Dizon or Dizon. My apologies if I mispronounce your name.
My name is Chisa, and I'm a four-year resident here on Maui. I'm originally from Kauai. Thank you this morning for listening to my testimony. I ask that you please say yes to labeling, and I also ask for another meeting that I may better inform my peers and other people in the community so we may come and support. There's a lot more people who support labeling. We have a right to know. We have a right to know what we consume, what we put in our kids' bodies. We should be able to make that choice if we want to consume GMO or not. I've made the choice to switch my diet to non-GMO with exercise. I've lost over 150 pounds. Research proves fatal. GMO is associated with a number of illnesses, including birth defects, neural problems, infertility. It's poorly tested, poses environmental and health risks, and I don't need to stand here before I even tell you all the risks and dangers because some activists or tree-huggers done that before. Major countries have made labeling mandatory, Japan and China to name a few. They're very health-conscious, high veggie diets. Our cousins in New Zealand, Aotearoa, have made labeling mandatory. And this is interesting that Hungary, it's actually a felony to grow GMO anything. If you're caught growing GMO, you will be put in jail. I wonder when this great country will get on the program because the Hawaiians are down. Absolutely no GMO. Please say yes to labeling. Don't leave us in the dark. We can't fully say no to GMO, but we can say yes to labeling. So I'd like to just leave you with this, that the government requires labeling for orange juice if it's made from concentrate. Shouldn't it also require labeling if you're genetically changing the structure of our food? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there any questions for the lady this morning on her testimony? If not, thank you very much. The next person this morning is Mr. Mark Sheehan. And I would ask as part of our decorum requirements, if you do have cell phones or any other noise-making devices, to please either turn it off or put it on the vibration component. I will enforce decorum in this chambers at all times. Good morning, Mr. Sheehan.
Aloha, Chairman, councilmembers, members of the public. My name is Mark Sheehan. I'm testifying on my own behalf today regarding the labeling bill. And I think the principle is that the public should have a right to know. If the ingredients on a package are labeled, be required to know what's in, not only what's in a food substance, but the order of concentration of those substances, then we ought to be able to know whether it's genetically modified, and that responsibility should be on the manufacturers of those things. It should not be the reverse, that people are required to put in some thing saying GMO-free. But the position of Monsanto, according to their Director of Corporate Communications, Phil Angel, is that Monsanto should not have to vouch for the safety of biotech food. Our interest is in selling as much of it as possible. That is not my interest. Our interest should be, and your interest should be, making sure, vouching for the safety of foods that are sold to consumers in this county. It's the precautionary principle. If there should be any doubt, then we should err on the side of caution. If you, and there's every reason why you can know a great deal about this subject, I entered dangers of Roundup into the search bar on Google, and in one-tenth of a second, there were 8,200,000 citations. Eight million, 200,000 on the dangers of Roundup. So, yes, we want labeling, but we happen to be ground zero for the entire planet with the highest concentration of open-air experiments of anywhere in the world. This is something that, apart from our food, we like to have safe air. But the issue today is labeling, and I want to make sure that the woman, the previous speaker referred to the number of countries. I'd like to let you know that it's Australia, New Zealand, Brazil, China, the Czech Republic, all 15 countries of the European Union, Hong Kong, Israel, Japan, Latvia, Mexico, Norway, the Philippines, Poland, the Republic of Korea, Russia, Saudi Arabia, Switzerland, Taiwan, and Thailand require labeling. We should too, as a way of protecting our citizens and giving them choice. So I think this really, the issue is a public trust doctrine. Health is a public trust issue, that the public relies on our guidance to make sure that they know what's in the foods that they're eating. And so we should in fact support a resolution supporting this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sheehan. Members, any questions on the testimony presented by Mr. Sheehan? Thank you very much this morning. Next, we have Brian Lehman.
Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
Good morning. Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, I'm Brian Lehman. I reside on Maui. And I rise to support mandatory labeling.
Excuse me, Mr. Lehman. Could you please speak into the microphone so we can capture your words clearly? Thank you.
Is that better?
That's fine. Thank you.
Should I start over?
You can start over.
Good morning. I'm Brian Lehman. I reside on Maui. I rise to support mandatory labeling of GMOs because I really believe I have a right to know what's in the food if it's not what I could customarily expect to find in nature. It is known that the FDA pollinated a disinformation policy through its revolving door with Monsanto, which continues to exist. So I don't want to take their word for it that it's safe for me to eat regardless of what's been done to it. GMOs are banned from USDA-certified organic. Non-GMO shopping guides are available, but contamination by GMOs is an inevitability. By 2009, organic canola had all but disappeared in Canada. As early as 2004, a study showed over 50% contamination of non-GMO papayas on the Big Island. So what freedom of choice there is could be lost. Over 80% of corn, cotton, and canola grown in the U.S., and over 90% of soy are already GMOs. But even the U.S. has now dropped international opposition to GMO labeling. Countries may now label for post-market monitoring without threat of sanctions from the WTO. What does that mean? Well, for one thing, it means that in the U.S. at least, there hasn't been any post-market monitoring. So even though studies have shown risks such as organ failure, sterility, and birth defects, in the U.S. they said we didn't have a right to know without proven safety. But now there could be more studies, but I don't want to be a guinea pig in the meantime. Secondly, virtually everyone wants GMOs labeled. In four news polls, over 85% of respondents to CBS and the New York Times, and over 90% responding to ABC and MSNBC, were in favor of mandatory labeling. But when you compare those percentages to the percentage of GMOs being grown, there's a polarity. If there's really such high demand for GMOs, then after you label it, it should maintain its market share or increase. But if market share decreases after you label it, then we're being forced-fed without our knowledge. And contrary to advertising, GMOs don't increase yields or decrease pesticide use, but in the U.S., GMOs control markets without labeling. So while everybody wants it, nobody's doing anything about it. But even a relatively small fraction of consumers, if they reject GMOs, can create a tipping point where GMOs are withdrawn from the market. So we need legislation. Genetically-modified taro is illegal in Maui County. So I know we can do this. And, Mr. Chairman, I've submitted email testimony with links to document my assertions.
We thank you for your testimony, Mr. Lehman. Members, any questions for the gentleman this morning? Thank you for your testimony. Simon Russell, and Mr. Russell will be followed by Luna Carlisle.
Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
Aloha. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have submitted my testimony.
You can adjust the phone, Mr. Russell.
I've submitted my testimony. I hope you get a chance to read it. I'm here to support the labeling of genetically-modified foods, and my main concern being that most of the genetically-modified foods on our dinner tables are Roundup-ready crops. And I personally don't enjoy the idea of eating food that's been sprayed with poison. Roundup is classified as a pesticide. Some people call it herbicides, but herbicides actually are pesticides. And I've been interested in this issue for about 10 years. I grew up on a farm in Kauai. I've been here for 18 years on Maui, and I have a small farm in Haiku. And I grow my own food because honestly, I don't trust the food in the stores anymore because it's not labeled. We don't know if corn is organic or not because it's not labeled. And say, if someone gets sick from eating GMOs, we'll never know because they're not labeled. So I would really appreciate your support in this labeling bill going before the state legislature, and I hope it passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Any questions for Mr. Russell? We thank you for your presence this morning. Luna Carlisle, and she will be followed by Shelby Hansen.
Good morning. My name is Luna Carlisle. I'm a committee member, a local teacher, mother, artist. I appreciate your attention. I would ask the other council members to actually look at the people who are testifying, hear us, ask us questions on what we're talking about, okay? Because this is serious. Mayor Al Kawa gave me some information in regards to addressing council members. His advice was, don't assume they've done their homework, or they have any idea what you're talking about, okay? So I can only assume that the reason this council has not already done, or is not immediately doing, the obvious right thing by mandating labeling GMO is due to ignorance. And that's okay because that puts you along with the rest of the country who has been purposely deceived and kept in the dark, who has been purposely made ignorant. But that's got to change right now, okay? The whole rest of the world knows about it. It's time to get on board, okay? So you might have been ignorant of the GMOs, the deliberate poisoning of our food supply, and worst of all, of the government complicity in this plan. Just this morning, a county council member called Kiss FM and told the DJ not to mention GMO labeling or this hearing on the air. That is unconscionable. This county harbors and welcomes the most unethical business on the planet. We welcome them to poison us, and we won't even label and talk about what's going on? Not acceptable. That is unconscionable, okay? The only other reason for not requiring immediate GMO labeling that I can think of is apathy. And there is nothing more tragic or dangerous than apathy, especially in positions of power, okay? If a person is terminally apathetic and they choose to ingest toxic chemicals and genetic mutilations, that's their problem and their choice. Key word: choice. We deserve the choice to make health a priority. We do not need to be deceived, okay? We all deserve and have natural and constitutional rights to know what we ingest and to make that choice. And just to recap, you can't just wash Roundup off, okay? It gets into the food. It gets into your DNA. It becomes part of you. You produce pesticide in your intestine after you ingest these things, and you pass it along. Do you understand how serious this is? Do you see that I'm trembling? This is serious, okay? Now, reflecting on the 10th anniversary of 9/11 recently and the terror attacks, I believe that a much more diabolical and all-encompassing terrorism is taking place right now to every human being in this country, to every person in this county and on this island, okay? Because we are purposely deceived and denied our basic right to choose health. To me, GMOs are an abomination of nature, my spirituality, ethics, everything. It's an absolute abomination, and I deserve, just like everyone deserves, the right to choose not to do it, okay? If people are terminally apathetic, that's their problem and their choice. We deserve a choice too. So you want to be a hero? You want to make a difference? You started out all idyllic and bright-eyed in politics. You want to make a difference? Now's your chance. Mandate labeling of GMOs right now. This is your chance. We have empowered you. Educate and empower yourself, and do the right thing for the people of this county. I beseech you. Please, ask me a question.
Thank you, Ms. Carlisle. Members, we thank you for your testimony this morning, Ms. Carlisle. Shelby Hansen. She will be followed by... We shall maintain order. This is not an open spectrum. This is a council committee meeting. Ms. Hansen, we appreciate your testimony this morning.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm a concerned resident and a business owner on this island, and I thank you for hearing this today because it is a critical, important issue. These are my stepchildren, and I don't like the word "step," so I call them my love children, my heart children, because there isn't anything I wouldn't do...
Ms. Hansen, you need to direct your comments to the Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. There isn't anything I wouldn't do to see them healthy and see them thrive. But these two normal-looking children are challenged every day by extreme food allergies, allergies to certain foods that are so severe that within hours of eating these certain foods, they develop rash-like symptoms on their skin that turn into ugly, purple sores that last about a week. This was so foreign to me. What has happened to the food supply in their lifetime? Beginning in the 1990s, new proteins were genetically engineered into our food supplies by corporations like Monsanto solely to maximize profits for the industrial food producers. These GM products snuck into our food supply like a thief in the night. One in 17 kids under the age of three now have a food allergy. There has been a 265% increase in the rate of hospitalizations of children related to food allergies. What has been genetically modified? Cow's milk, corn, corn syrup, sweeteners, canola, wheat, and soy. What are my children allergic to? Canola, wheat, soy, cow's milk. It's crazy. Through much frustration, trial, and error at home, we are trying to find solutions so that they can have a normal life. We are searching for organically-grown, unaltered food that does not make them sick. When the U.S. introduced GMO products back in the 1990s, 27 countries in Europe, that's 27 countries in Europe, Canada, Australia, Japan, and New Zealand responded by not allowing unlabeled genetically-modified foods onto their shelves. What is it that they know about this stuff, this genetically-modified foods, that we don't know? Don't fool yourself. This stuff is poison. How do I know? Because I look into their eyes, I see, I dress their wounds. I know that they have been affected, and we have all been used as guinea pigs, and it has got to stop. Every time this GMO poison machine pushes through another food group that is genetically-altered, they steal the quality of life from my children and from you.
Ms. Hansen, we thank you for your testimony this morning. If you are reading from something that you have prepared, we're more than happy to receive your written comments, and our committee staff will assist you, and we'll distribute that to all the committee members for you. Next is Megan or Megan Bryan, Brienne.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Megan Bryan, and I am a resident of Maui County. We, the people, are entitled to know the truth about what goes into our food. This means what's inside the food we eat and the methods by which it is grown. Honesty and truth in labeling is a basic right that we deserve. Granting the people our right to know what's in our food is well worth the effort it will take to institute this legislation. Maui County and the State of Hawaii can set a good example here and lead the way to show the world that this state still has respect for its residents' rights. It is the role and the responsibility of our representatives to advocate for labeling so that companies are not allowed to veil their products and shield us from knowing what's inside. Let's not delay this process any longer. Full disclosure is the only right action here. We, the people, are asking for labels on GMO foods, and we want to see this happen now. It is only right to disclose the truth and to allow we, the people, to make choices for ourselves. Please treat us with the dignity that we deserve. Hawaii should not regress into playing into the big-money game where dollars decide the outcomes of the politics, and we should not let big companies and the interests of business and income streams do the deciding for us. It is the honor and responsibility of our elected representatives in service to the public to stand for the public in the best way possible. This opportunity for GMO labeling is one we cannot afford to miss. If you skip over this chance for honest disclosure through labeling, you are skipping out on the very reason for being in this role, to serve the people. The easy, quick, and cheap solution is not the same as the best solution, and the most lucrative choice is not the same as the best choice. We want to live in a state based in honest governance, which represents the well-being of the people. Thank you for approving the resolution on the table in support of GMO labeling. Please approve this legislation at any and all levels, and please encourage your peers to support GMO labeling statewide. It is due time that genetically-engineered foods be labeled for all to see clearly. I cannot think of one good reason which would justify hiding GMO ingredients from us. Just show us what is in our food, and let the market of conscious consumers decide with our dollars on a fair, open market.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bryan, for your comments this morning. Any questions for the lady on her testimony, members? We thank you for your presence this morning.
Thank you. Do you want my printed?
We'll be happy to receive it. Thank you. Next will be, I believe it's Ilsa Menger. I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your name. And she will be followed by Bruce Oatway.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Ilsa Menger. I'm a resident of Maui for about 15 years. I'm a representative of a group called Maui Mommies. It's a Facebook group, and we count like many, many mothers, many of which wanted to be here but with little kids. Being little kids is very difficult to come here at this time in the morning and with kids. As Americans, all Americans have the right to know and choose what they eat. Foods containing GMOs are unsafe for consumption, and owning patents unseized by giant agricultural corporations is, in my opinion, unethical. The United States is the only country in the Western world that has not required mandatory labeling. In Europe, GMO labeling is required. I urge you to keep the organic standards pure, which is not possible if foods don't have to be labeled if they contain GMOs. This includes the feed for livestock. I choose organic because I care for the environment and for our local farmers. I care for our children and fellow citizens. I do not want to consume GMO foods, and I demand on behalf of all those who could not be here this morning that you... Sorry. That the food, that it will be labeled. All foods that contain GMOs will be labeled. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions for the lady? If not, thank you very much for your presence, and the Chair will note the presence of committee member Mr. White this morning. Thank you for being here. Mr. Oatway, and he will be followed by Letitia Isabella.
Aloha.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Bruce Oatway. I am a poet, musician, and a teacher on Maui. I've taught at Kamehameha. I teach English at various high schools on the island for the DOE, and I've also been at Seaberry. I'm also, 20 years ago, worked as a caretaker in Malibu, California, on a very large property that I had an accident on with Roundup, in my face and my eyes. And it's a miracle that I'm standing here before you and can somewhat see you. I talked to the head of the chemical division of Monsanto at the time, a doctor who developed Roundup, who assured me that it was perfectly safe. In 20 years, I have investigated Monsanto. And a quick look at Wikipedia, Monsanto should horrify you, actually. The information's there. When I requested Monsanto to help me out with maybe the doctor's bill or some UV sunglasses or something, of course, I received a letterhead with 20 lawyers on it, and a lawsuit was quite out of the question, and like, neck of the woods, my financial situation. So I'd like to read to you what I have written, an email to you, to quickly wrap this up. The issue of labeling, and I am for labeling, the issue of labeling of GMO foods is about the very foundation of human freedom, freedom of choice, the freedom to choose what we as individuals put into our bodies and feed to our children. These are our sacred vessels of God, and I won't have mine defiled. So let me be direct. You know who Monsanto and Cergenta and Pioneer Seed are. Recent article came up in the New York Times that accentuated and went into detail about how the land of the pineapple that went down and the sugarcane that went down on Oahu is being taken over by them for seed propagation. It's there, the information. It's there, the information. You are the elected representatives of we, the people, the leaders of the policy for our island, and I am here to tell you that right now a wave is coming, a huge wave.
Mr. Oatway, your time is up. You did share that you have sent us your email.
Thank you. I will submit this to you.
And we will be happy to receive it. And again, as I stated earlier, all members of the committee shall receive your comments this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oatway. Letitia Isabella, and she will be followed by Nancy Jill Sundberg.
I'm Letitia Isabella.
Good morning.
Good morning, and I am for GMO labeling, and I also have witnessed many of these testimonies. They're informed, they're concise, they're passionate, and I can't help but feel that what we are imploring from you people is falling on deaf ears. How many more people have to stand here to this committee and plead for something that is our right? We do not want these insidious mutations shoved down our throats. I have children here, have a grandchild here. I love this island. We came here because of the beauty and because it should be kept a pristine environment, and I see it being contaminated, and this can no longer happen. So the only conclusion I can come to, and let me tell you, I'm really at heart an artist, a poet, a mother. I have my own business. I fly back and forth to California quite often. I'm a businessperson. This is not, this is not my nature to come and be political in any way, but I've had to get out of my comfort zone and say, you know what? If you people are not going to be educated and see what is happening here with this company, Monsanto, taking over this pristine, beautiful environment, then it's time for people like myself, my husband Bruce, my mother, who's right now teaching up at Kamehameha, to come and fill these seats and to represent the people. And this is what I ask for all of you, all who are in support of keeping this environment, this ina sacred, to please, we have to get out of our comfort zones and fill these seats and do what's right, starting here, because this is a microcosm of what's going on across the world, and that's my piece. That's what I want to say.
Thank you very much for sharing your testimony with us this morning. Nancy Jill Sundberg, and she will be followed by Colette Evans.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Nancy Sundberg. The last time I was here to testify in support for this legislation to be included in the package, I was struck by the personal stories of people who had direct experiences with GMOs, like the woman whose child was ill until she removed GMO food from his diet. Often, we are inspired by our personal experience and convictions to make a difference so that other people may not have to bear the suffering that we have. In multiple studies involving GMO ingestion, the inability to reproduce sterility is exhibited, as is a sharp increase in infant mortality. Genes from GMO product, Roundup-ready soy, have also been known to transfer bacteria into the mouth and gut and genes. So I ask you this. You were at a party with your child, your grandchild, your niece or nephew, and you were offered two plates of nachos, and the person serving them informs you that one of the nachos is made with genetically modified corn, the other is made from regular corn, oh, or better yet, organic corn. Which would you choose? Which would you choose for your child? That would be up to you, wouldn't it? And wouldn't you be happy to have a choice based on that information and the opportunity to learn more? The issue of GMOs and the magnitude of its impact and potential further impact on the food industry is catastrophic to the food supply and human health. It is unfortunate that GMOs are not an issue in mainstream America or in the spotlight in Hawaii due to the political maneuvering of Monsanto and the machine that is keeping their selfish interests and greed flourishing. There's been conscious choices to keep people ignorant of GMOs. Today, you have the choice to perpetuate the ignorance that has already been created or to choose information and knowledge, to take into consideration the people of Hawaii, the public, your children, nieces, nephews, grandchildren, and all future children that are to come, to serve the best interest of the whole when the whole doesn't even know what's at stake. Most people are ignorant of this issue. You have an opportunity to serve them with information, I'm almost done, and potential knowledge of GMOs, thereby they can make informed choices. I know today you're considering the introduction of this legislation. I'm asking you more. I'm asking you to get behind it, educate yourselves on GMOs. Today, I hope to appeal to your voice of conscience, your desire to serve public interest, which I believe is why you are holding the seat of Maui County Council, and I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sundberg, for your testimony this morning. Next, we have Colette Evans, and following her, she'll be Lauren Pang.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I would like to thank you for hearing this again today. It gave me an opportunity to look back over what I said and what I'd like to add, and I'd like to, I'm really thankful for this opportunity. Clearly, there's a lot of concern. If you aren't aware of books such as Genetic Roulette, full of studies about the health implications of GMOs, or a growing concern, which is protecting the food supply, put out by the Union of Concerned Scientists, I really urge you to educate yourself about why people are so passionate about this issue. I want to take up a specific issue this morning, which is that there was a report put out called "The Attitude of Hawaii Consumers Towards Genetically Modified Fruit," which was presented to government representatives this spring by the University of Hawaii. As I understand it, this report was a substantial contributor to the defeat of the bill when we asked for labeling earlier this year at the state level. It's packaged very nicely, actually, I just gave it to somebody to look at, so don't have it, packaged very nicely with graphs. It is followed with written testimony from peoples whose opinions count for more than my own because they supposedly represent associations. A troubling issue about this report, other than it was sanctioned by the university, which is troubling in itself, is that, and I want to take up the specific point because it's so important, the FDA is considered to be sufficiently regulating this issue. So I want to call to your attention that the FDA does not have our back. Per their own federal register statement of policy, they say, quote, "Ultimately, it is the food producer who is responsible for assuring safety." Okay, so that's what they're saying. Now, if we go for the responsibility for our safety to biotech, which is a troubling issue in itself, to go to biotech to say, is your product safe? What do they have to say about it? Well, I'm going to repeat a quote that somebody used earlier, which is, in the New York Times, the director of corporate communications for Monsanto quoted, was quoted as saying, "Monsanto should not have to safeguard the safety of biotech. Our interest is in selling as much of it as possible. Assuring the safety of it is the job of the FDA." Which brings me to this report put out by the FDA. It is their scientific evaluation of their own process and how it's going within the FDA, okay? On the first table of contents, it says, "The FDA cannot fulfill its mission because its science base has eroded and its scientific organizational structure is weak." Furthermore, 3.1.1, "FDA does not have the capacity to ensure the safety of food for the nation." These are the people that we are trusting. These are the people we're saying need to have our back. They don't have our back, we need your help. Please, put this to the state level, let people vote on it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. We appreciate your testimony this morning. Lauren Pang, and he will be followed by Melanie Moorhead.
Good morning. I'm Lauren Pang. I'm a board-certified physician. My day job is the district health officer for Maui County. I speak as a private citizen. As a private citizen, I'm a retired Army Medical Corps. I'm a consultant for the World Health Organization since 1985. I've worked with, for, and against the FDA. Let me just take it right now. A previous speaker told you about a little problem at the FDA. If you read the fine print, the only unit which seems to be functioning scientifically at the FDA was the drug and vaccine unit. That was my unit. And yet, I'm very insulted that the rest of the FDA seems to have forgotten what science is. Today, I would like to bring up a couple issues which I apologize, some of you have heard this before, my position does not change. We took on Calo Taro to prohibit its existence in Maui, GM Calo. We were supported by a group called American Academy of Environmental Medicine, very good group, very respected group, been around a long time, 300 MDs and PhDs from America and Canada. They take a position against GMOs, and they are trying to counsel physicians to take a position. They specifically wrote a letter when we went against GM Calo, saying, Calo is one example, but will you guys please get on board us with the rest of the issues? What was their position? Number one, doctors are to counsel all their patients that GMOs are untested as far as health and safety is concerned, and probably very worrisome based on the animal data. So not quite tested in humans, not tested at all. We can't do it post-marketing because they're not labeled. Next, they want doctors to consider GM foods the source of unusual syndromes, either quantity or quality, including the allergies. Next, they want independent people to evaluate the safety, and that's not the company evaluating itself. That's competent people, not the other agencies of the FDA, which I do not trust. And finally, they are asking for a moratorium or labeling. That was confusing to me. I called up the president, and I said, if we have a moratorium on it, what is there to label? They said, oh, sorry, sorry, oversight. Moratorium on new products coming out, new GMOs, all new products are to be considered like new drugs and vaccines, not based on old things, and labeling on the existing ones. They kind of bought into the idea that some of this stuff might be beyond recall, so you could at least label the ones that are out there and a moratorium on the new ones. Okay, that's their position. The very well-respected group, very well-referenced, and as a physician, I agree with them, and they have responded very quickly and effectively, and they asked me to now help them in Central America and Africa. The other thing you've heard is that internationally, we are allowed to label now without violating world rules. Thank you.
Dr. Pang, we thank you very much for your testimony and thoughts this morning. Thank you so much for being here. Any questions for Dr. Pang? Dr. Pang, we thank you again, and I'm sure we'll be in touch with you. Next is Melanie Moorhead, and following Ms. Moorhead, we have Darren Mann. Good morning.
Thank you for this opportunity to address all of you. I am visiting my daughter here in Maui. I live in Los Angeles, and I'm thinking of moving here. My son is in the process of moving here. But what I've learned about GMOs just in the past 48 hours has forever altered my perception of Maui, I have to say, I'm very disturbed by that, that I've gone from seeing this as a beautiful natural paradise to an outdoor genetic engineering laboratory. This is severe stuff. I didn't even know, I mean, I avoid eating GMOs myself, and I want them banned, but I really urge you to do this labeling law, to support this labeling law and get it passed. What I've recently learned is the genetic engineering blasts a gene with a promoter on it into the cell of another product, tomato, fish into tomato, for example. If it goes well, it's incorporated in the body of the tomato. If it goes poorly, we've got what's called a loose promoter out in the environment, traveling the world. We have 33,000 genes in our body, 98% of which are turned off at any one time. When you have loose promoters looking for something to turn on, they can turn them on in your body, your children's body, your pets' bodies. We don't want this. We are altering life on Earth at the most basic microbial, bacterial, virus level. This, to me, is totally panic. I mean, I was just so upset when I really realized the extent of it. It's not just a matter of not shopping for GMO. This is a really serious alteration to life on the planet. And GMO supporters say, oh, this is just crossbreeding, like Luther Burbank with his roses, or take a peach tree and a plum tree and you get a nectarine. No, this is genetic engineering in the laboratory, and at the genetic level, we're talking about something very different from crossbreeding. So once these things are turned on, where do they go? What else will they turn on? So we don't have long-term human studies yet, but we do know that if disease starts to occur on a major level, then maybe somebody will pay attention, but I urge you to take the responsibility to pay attention now because animal studies in the laboratory, and I'll just summarize a few of them. Rats-fed GMO insecticide-producing maize grew more slowly, suffered liver and kidney damage, showed alterations to their blood chemistry, and a marked disturbance in their immune system. Rats-fed GMO tomatoes develop stomach ulcers. Their offspring died at four times the rate of normal, I mean, rats-fed non-GMO food. And what about the meat we eat? That GMO feed is detectable, the genes are detectable via something called horizontal transfer, which the biotech industry told us couldn't happen, but it is happening. And their offspring show disturbances, their lambs show disturbances in their liver and pancreas. This is a life-altering-as-we-know-it-on-the-planet issue. We need to address it at that level. I urge you to support labeling. Thank you.
Ms. Moorhead, we thank you for your comments this morning. Darren Mann, and Mr. Mann will be followed by Jennifer Warren.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Darren Mann. I'm a long-term, longtime resident of Maui. A lot of people have mentioned different countries around the world that are against, that are for labeling of GMOs and restrict the import and distribution, the cell utilization, field trials, and commercial planting of GMOs. They're in all over Africa, Europe, the Middle East, Asia, South America, and here in the Pacific Islands, we have American Samoa, the Cook Islands, Fiji, Kiribati, federal states of Micronesia, Marshall Islands, Papua New Guinea, Samoa, Samoan Islands, Tonga, Vanuatu, Australia, and New Zealand. All of these governments have taken steps to protect their people, their people's health and welfare. The old saying, "There is no smoke without fire," runs true here, and it seems to me the smoke is billowing across all continents. Unfortunately, big government here in the U.S. is more concerned with corporate profit than it is about the well-being of its people. It seems that lobbyists are out of the lobby, and some of them are in the corner offices. So it comes down to local government, and it comes down to you guys to protect us. More and more people are becoming educated about the GMO issue and are making very clear choices, as they have in many other countries. I have no doubt in my mind that in the very near future, the devastating effects of these contaminated foods will come to light. Think lead paint, think asbestos, times 1,000. And when the people of Maui ask you guys, what did you do to protect us? You will be able to stand tall and say that you did your research, you did your due diligence, and found the same things others have spoken about here today. And you did everything in your power to protect the people of Maui and Hawaii. Please give Hawaiian voters the chance to vote on this labeling bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mann, for your testimony this morning. Jennifer Warren. Jennifer Warren, and following Ms...
Chair.
Excuse me?
Chair, I have a question.
Oh, Mr. Mann, excuse me, may I ask you to please return? There's a question from Mr. Couch for you. My apologies, Ms. Warren. Mr. Couch?
Thank you, Mr. Mann, and everybody for coming out and discussing this today. I just wanted some clarification on his comments about giving the people the chance to vote. What's your comment? What were you talking about there?
On the labeling issue?
Yeah.
That you guys are going to pass this through legislation to go to Oahu, so the people can then vote on labeling?
Okay, just so you know, it's the legislature's vote. Unfortunately, it's not going to come up before the general public for voting. So, it would be your legislators. We'd need everybody in this room to be able to go to the legislature and discuss it with them as well.
Yes, we could, yeah.
So, yeah, unfortunately, it's not going to go to the main populace for a vote.
But the people can urge the legislature?
Exactly.
Okay, could you take it to, make sure you take it to that level?
Yeah.
So that we, people can take it to the legislators?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your question. We'll ask Ms. Warren to return to the podium, and following Ms. Warren will be Bruce Douglas.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Jennifer Warren, and I'm a resident of Maui County. And as they say, "Past is prologue." So, I wanted to start today with something that happened in the '60s that is completely relevant to today, of the same industries that have now repositioned themselves to be bioagro, their position when they were dealing with asbestos. In 1962, the Gulf Oil Company told their workers in a training manual that the fibers of asbestos are not injurious to the respiratory organs. Working with this material does not subject one to this hazard to one's health. As they move through, and as we all know that this is a blatant lie, one of the people who served and helped bring them down on the subject as a witness in asbestos litigation summed it up, their series of defenses is following. "Asbestos doesn't hurt your health." "Okay, okay, it does hurt your health, but it doesn't cause cancer." "Okay, asbestos can cause cancer, but not our kind of asbestos." "Okay, our kind of asbestos can cause cancer, but not the kind this person got." "Okay, our kind of asbestos can cause cancer, but not at the dosage to which this person was exposed." "Okay, asbestos does cause cancer and at this dosage, but this person got his disease for something else, like smoking." "Okay, he was exposed to our asbestos, and it does cause his cancer, but we did not know about the danger when we exposed him." "Okay, okay, we did know about the danger when we exposed him, but the statute of limitations has run out." "Okay, the statute of limitations hasn't run out, but if we're guilty, we'll go out of business, and everyone will be worse off." "Okay, we'll agree to go out of business, but only if you let us keep part of our company intact, and only if you limit our liability for the harms we have caused." There's no... Okay, so we're at the beginning of that. We already have books out, big books, lots of things, all over the world, independent science, showing the documented health risks of genetically engineered foods. There's no question of fact, there's a conflict of interest. They want to make money, we want to live. I think it's pretty straightforward. So, labeling the products gives us the opportunity to live, also gives us the opportunity to put their wonderful scientific minds in other directions that could benefit the world, not destroy it. The difference with asbestos is they could stop producing it. They can't stop this. Life is promiscuous. It gets it on, a lot. So, basically, nobody can say, control, or stop it. Any hubristic assertion that they can is completely false, to the point where I don't want to be here in 20 years, reading the next volume of this book, to explain how we all ignored it. And as they get their plausible deniability, I mean, I call a lie a lie. It's all over the place, and it's only us trying to deny it because we have the largest economic stake. Like all these other countries, all these other people saying, "They're not behind it. We've got the huge companies." WikiLeaks just put out how the U.S. government's trying to strong-arm governments behind their back. So, just simply, you guys, "Past is prologue. Let's label, so we can at least track it, so we can at least find out before," as they said, "nieces, nephews, children, grandchildren, animals, everything." This is a much bigger problem than asbestos. And they just, "Past is prologue." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. Mr. Douglas, Bruce Douglas, and following him will be Loretta Hughes.
I'd like to start by recognizing and thanking Ellie Cochran for submitting this bill, for being our voice in the county council, for being the person who really cares, and I hope everybody here recognizes that. And when it comes time for voting, you'll know who to support. Thank you. The American Academy of Environmental Medicine was something that Lauren Pang cited from. It's a mainstream, very mainstream organization, is highly respected. I'm going to read the part that he didn't get to, talking about the animal studies and what they're citing from in order to say it. "The safety assessments of GM foods have been based on the idea of substantial equivalence, such that, quote, 'If a new food is found to be substantially equivalent in composition and nutritional characteristics to an existing food, it can be regarded as safe as conventional food,' unquote. However, several animal studies have indicated serious health effects associated with GM food consumption, including infertility, immune degradation, accelerated aging, dysregulation of genes associated with cholesterol synthesis, insulin regulation, cell signaling, protein formation, and changes in the kidney, liver, spleen, and gastrointestinal system." It goes on to say, "Multiple animal studies show significant immune dysfunctions, including unregulation of cytokines associated with asthma, allergy, and inflammation. Animal studies have shown altered structure and function of liver, including altered lipid and carbohydrate metabolism, as well as cellular changes that could lead to accelerated aging and possibly lead to accumulation of reactive oxygen species or free radicals. Changes in the kidney, pancreas, and spleen have also been documented. A recent 2008 study linked GMO corn to infertility, including significant decrease in offsprings over time, and significant lower litter weight in mice-fed GMO corn. The study also found over 400 genes were found to be expressed differently in mice-fed GMO corn. These genes are also known to control protein synthesis and modification, cell signaling, cholesterol synthesis, and insulin regulation. Studies have also shown intestinal changes in animals fed GMO foods, including proliferation of cell growth and disruption of intestinal immune systems. Therefore, because GMO foods pose serious health effects in the area of toxicology, allergy, and immune function, reproductive health, metabolism, psychological, psychogenic, and genetic health, and are without benefit, the American Academy of Environmental Medicine believes it is imperative to adopt precautionary principles." So, that's from our mainstream organizations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Any questions for Mr. Douglas members? Mr. Douglas, thank you for your presence this morning. Loretta Hughes, and she'll be followed by Yo Kobayashi.
My name's Loretta Hughes. I've lived on Maui for more than 40 years. The question is, if GMO producers believe their products are beneficial, why aren't they labeling them with pride? If there's any possibility GMO foods and products are harmful to anyone, isn't mandatory labeling the right choice, the right answer? Council members, you're our voice. Protect our Oana. What we do here matters. Thank you. Aloha.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes, for your...
Chair.
Yes, Ms. Hughes?
Ms. Hughes?
Ms. Hughes, can you come back, please? We have a question from Ms. Cochran on your testimony.
Thank you, Chair. Basically, I just wanted to thank you, Ms. Hughes, for highlighting, you know, if such a, if a person is proud of their product and wants to, you know, perpetuate it, and they should do so with pride. And that, for me, this whole reason is to choice, right? And labeling is, will give everyone here that option. And so, I just want to thank you for turning out and stating that particular sentence for here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hughes. Yo Kobayashi, and he will be followed by Courtney Brook.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Yo Kobayashi. I'm a private conservative citizen. Thank you very much for your time today. The consumer's right to know what is in their food is so fundamental that that fact alone should mandate the labeling of GMOs. But especially given the fact what we're dealing with. I mean, the acronym GMO is tossed around so much that I almost forgot what GMO is. It's a living organism whose most basic blocks of life have been tinkered with in a scientific lab. So, it's plants that are designed to die off after a season. Plants that are immune to heavily toxic chemicals that are extremely harmful to people and other plants. And plants, like in the case of BT crops, infused with genes from bacteria so that they themselves produce toxins. I mean, would your neighbors and your family members really want to eat this stuff? At the very least, there should be labeling. And what's also disturbing is the safety track record of the biotech companies. One of their biggest arguments is that the GM foods act like normal food, so they get digested in your system, so therefore, it's safe. Now, a recent landmark study conducted in a university in Canada shows that 93% of pregnant women, 93% pregnant women, had toxins, the BT toxins, in their bloodstream. These are normal Canadian women with a normal Canadian diet. And the fact that it's in the bloodstream means that it didn't get digested in the food sys, I'm sorry, in the normal course of the digestive tracts. This is contrary to what the biotech companies are saying, as they're one of the core arguments for the safety of these products. The big companies have huge corporate interest. Monsanto does like $10 billion in revenues, $2 billion in net income every year, $2 billion. So, the argument that it's prohibitively expensive to label this stuff, not true. Our first line defense should be the FDA, but it really isn't the case. And so, our next line defense is our politicians, you guys. So, please, I would appreciate if you would bring this up to legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kobayashi. Any questions for the gentleman on his testimony? Mr. Kobayashi, we do have a question for you, please. I thank you for returning.
Thank you for being here this morning. Just a quick question. Do we have your testimony in writing?
No, I don't.
Well, then, let me ask you, because I, it kind of piqued my interest. You referred to something about, something that was in the bloodstream of pregnant women. Can you, can you go over that again so that I understand it?
Yes. It was a study conducted by a, the obstetrics and gynecology department of a Canadian university. It was conducted this year, and basically, they studied the bloodstream samples of women, pregnant women, and they found in 93% of the women that they had the BT toxins. These are bacteria-based toxins that they plant, they put into soy, corn, to kill off, for corn, they use it to kill off the insects, the borers found in corn. And so, this toxin that they put into the, infused into the corn were found in the women's bloodstream. And one of the core arguments for the biotech companies is that the alterations of the chemicals used in the GM process, i.e. the BT toxins, will get digested. It will not be found, and has not found, in the bloodstream, and this is not happening. It is not being digested fully. It is showing up in the bloodstream.
So, they say that these toxins are not absorbed, that they are excreted.
It's, what do you mean, excreted?
Well, they come out in the waste, and that they don't get in, they don't get, you know, absorbed by the body, and that they're excreted. And you're saying that the study said that's not true.
That's right, that's right, that's right.
Okay. Just trying to be really clear about what we're hearing here.
Okay, yes, I'll be happy to forward the research.
If you could, that would be very helpful.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Kobayashi, we'll look forward to that supplemental and get it distributed to the committee members. Courtney Brook, please, and she'll be followed by Nicole Brown.
Good morning, Policy Committee. My name is Courtney Brook. I'm a Maui resident. I'm here representing Upcountry Sustainability, the Keepahulu Community Association, and GMO Free Maui. I want to thank Ellie for bringing up the comment about if it's, if the GMO products are so wonderful, like maybe the GMO papayas, as people in the papaya industry are claiming, then I think they should be proud to label them. I went to the river yesterday. I went to Eau Valley to pray about all this. This is an issue that really touches my heart, and I put a lot of energy into educating Maui and the rest of the world, because I feel like Maui has an opportunity to really take a stand for sustainability, and you can't do that without labeling GMOs. So, I have some information gleaned from Robin O'Brien's TED Talk. She's the author of The Unhealthy Truth. She served as an equity analyst covering the food and tech industries. In the 1990s, synthetically engineered proteins were injected into the food supply to maximize profitability for corporations, but no human trials have been done. In 1994, when GMO foods were placed on the shelves in the U.S., they had already been banned in Canada, U.K., Australia, New Zealand, Japan, and all 27 European countries because they had not been proven safe for human or livestock consumption. The U.S. government, however, took a different approach and allowed you and me to eat these synthetic proteins because, quote-unquote, "they had not been proven dangerous." Growing up in the '40s and '50s, Robin O'Brien states, "She rarely heard of the word cancer." Now, in the USA, the highest rate of cancer of any country on the planet, mostly breast, prostate, and colon linked to synthetic growth hormone. Currently, 1 in 2 men and 1 in 3 women in the U.S. are expected to get cancer. 9 in 10 of the women's breast cancers are environmentally triggered. In 1994, in order to drive profitability for the dairy industry, scientists created a genetically engineered protein, a synthetic growth hormone, which was injected into cows to produce more milk for more profits. It made the animals sick with increased antibiotic usage. In 1996, soy, which is primarily fed to livestock, was engineered to withstand increasing doses of weed killer. So, more weed killer was sold, and now you had something new that was patentable, more profits. In the late '90s, scientists engineered insecticide in corn seed DNA. So, as it grows, it releases its own insecticide. Corn is now regulated as an insecticide by the EPA, more profits. The United States spends more on disease than any country in the world. Why? The government is looking out for the financial health of corporations and not the health of American citizens. Hawaii can be a leader in changing that mindset. Coca-Cola, Walmart, and Kraft Foods have accommodated the consumer demand in all these countries which ban GMO foods. They can do it here as well. In my opinion, not only should all GMO products be labeled, they should be banned altogether. They are unfit for human consumption. Corporations using Hawaiian soil to test their GMO chemicals should be driven out of our state. Please approve the resolution for the labeling of all GMO products.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brook. Any questions for the lady on testimony presented to the committee, Ms. Cochran?
Just wanted to double-check. Courtney, we do have your testimony. You submitted it ahead. If not, if we can get that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that request, Ms. Cochran. Nicole Brown, and following Ms. Brown would be Adria Marin.
Hello, my name is Nicole Brown. I am a resident of Maui County. I feel it is everyone's right to be aware of what they're putting in their bodies. Without full disclosure of ingredients, modifications, et cetera, this is not possible. As a nutritional therapy practitioner, I believe in eating healthy, wholesome, nutrient-rich, unadulterated food the way nature intended it to be eaten. These foods are the only foods that fulfill a body's nutritional requirements adequately. There have been no long-term studies on how genetically modified foods affects the cells of the human body. I do not feel the profits and bottom lines of Monsanto and other corporations are worth risking my health or the health of my loved ones. I do not want to be a part of any experiment unknowingly. I feel that Monsanto and other corporations need to take responsibility and fully disclose the nature of the ingredients that they use in any type of genetic modifications or otherwise used in the production of consumable or non-consumable products. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brown. Members, any questions on testimony presented by Ms. Brown? Thank you so much for your presence this morning. Adria Marin. Adria Marin, and the next person after that would be Marta Greenleaf. Okay, once more, is there a Adria, A-D-R-I-A, Marin? Okay, thank you so much for letting us know. Marta Greenleaf, and she will be followed by Michael Murphy.
Good morning, members of the council. My name is Marta Greenleaf. I am a 10-year resident of Maui. I'm a mother, a grandmother, and an organic farmer. I have felt very strongly about the issue of genetically modified food for as long as I've known about it. And you've heard all the testimony. You understand the issue that's going on here. I don't need to repeat it. I just ask you to please listen to all the people and also understand that there are many people who don't know, and they are still getting poisoned. And maybe if there was labeling on genetically modified food, the people would be more informed and be able to make a choice. Right now, no one has a choice. So I ask you, please, put this into law here. Maui's main industry is tourism. Just imagine if we could sell Maui as a place where this is a law. We would attract many, many more people here who are aware. And this place could be the paradise that we present it to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments, Ms. Greenleaf. Members, any questions for Ms. Greenleaf? Thank you for your presence. Michael Murphy, and following Mr. Murphy will be Amy Rymel.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I would like to thank each and every person who has come to address this issue, and also Ellie, thank you for sponsoring this, and the rest of the council members who've come to address this most dire issue. My name is Michael Murphy.
You need to address the chair, please. Thank you.
My name is Michael Murphy, and I'm known for my documentary, What in the World Are They Spraying?, which addresses the chemtrails geoengineering issue and the contamination that we have in our atmosphere. While we cannot choose the air that we breathe, we do have the ability to choose the food that we can eat, but only if it is labeled. I come to Maui for many reasons. One of the primary reasons is the enlightenment of the community, their ability to recognize these important issues, and the integrity of certain individuals on our county council and certain political leaders who are willing to address issues like this. I firmly believe that Maui can and will be an example, not only for the rest of Hawaii, but also for the world. So I believe that it is incumbent upon the council to pass this resolution and protect the rights and the health of the individuals here. For that reason, I'm considering also moving to Hawaii, again, to get more active in addressing these issues, because Maui will be an example for the world. That is it. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your testimony, Mr. Murphy. Members, any questions for Mr. Murphy on testimony this morning?
Thank you.
Mr. Murphy, we thank you for your presence. Amy Rymel. Okay, thank you very much for letting us know. Next, we have Cynthia Groves, and following her will be Brendan Moorhead.
Good morning.
I'm grateful that so many people are present to address this issue. Five years ago, I met with Ricky and Mike Molina and Joe Pontenella and Carol here and to address, to bring up the Center for Food Safety, the hidden health hazards of genetic engineering. And at the time, this was a beautiful thing, that there was an awakening, but it takes time for it to penetrate and to have the backing of so many people who are becoming more educated and can stand behind all of you as council members when you go forth to the legislature. I have testified at the legislature on the GMO issue, and I testified also on it in relationship to a biodiversity bill, which was changed by corporate to a bio-prospecting bill. So the focus of it really needs to come back to our connection to the AINA, to our bodies, a connection more being in our bodies and connected to it. I am a former practice management healthcare professional. I've done a lot of research. When I found out about what was happening with GMO in the, not just being given to pigs, but given to humans, I spent six months researching and finding data. The data has been out there for a long time on the risks, and it's just more and more out there. I mean, you know, this can all be-- Here we go, the you write to know genetic engineering and the secret changes in your food. The GMO trilogy. Foods, Inc. It's been on Dr. Oz recently. It's getting out there more to the public who hasn't been as known about the risks of genetic engineering foods. I, anyway, I'm submitting that as part of the testimony, okay? And I have a few other videos that are out there, too. I also am submitting the American Academy of Environmental Medicine paper that has been read from. And also, I did some research on labeling in the EU. And I realize that even in the EU, with as many nations that have, excuse me, countries that have banned GMO, that they're actually, and there's more banning than restricting. I thought that was really interesting to discover. There is a website that would be very valuable, I think, to Lauren Pang particularly, because it's going to go to this issue. If it passes, we'll go to the Health Department. But I was a little disheartened, I have to say, that even in the EU, in terms of any restrictions on the labeling, that it really didn't go far enough. And I'm, because the issue--
Ms. Groves, your time is up.
Okay. I did submit email?
Yeah, we have received, and we are more than happy to assist you with whatever additional submittals you would like to provide the committee for your purposes and reference purposes.
Great.
Members, questions for Ms. Groves on testimony she has presented to you? Ms. Cochran?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rose, for being here. I'm just curious, off the top of your head, what other developed countries such as ourselves are, you know, are in favor and do, you know, allow GMO? I know everyone's citing all the countries that do not. But I'm just curious, are we the only, you know, big country that is actually, you know, allowing it at this point? Do you know off the top of your--
I would say there's more. You know, the GMO proponents, the Monsanto is here in the United States. And there is, they're focusing a lot of emphasis on the United States. So it's not so much out there in terms of the research on the negative effects. That's been more in Europe. They care a lot more about the food. You know, their whole lifestyle is really oriented more around food. And here, we're fast food. I mean, and we are also getting more insulin resistance. You know, I actually was going to address that today, but because it is such a problem. But in terms of other countries, it's really not promoted. If anything, there's, the awareness is so great in other countries. It's here where it's hidden particularly.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, Ms. Groves, again, thank you very much for your presence and your testimony this morning. Brendan Moorhead, please. And following Mr. Moorhead will be Jennifer Kennedy.
Good morning.
My name is Brendan Moorhead. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'd like to, I saw some footage of the testimony from the last time around in the spring. I was not there at that time. I wanted to reply to some of the arguments of the opponents that might have contributed to the defeat of labeling previously. One of the arguments that was made is that people can just buy products labeled GMO free. While that's true, the big problem, which is amply, I think, documented in the testimony that we've heard so far today, is that there's a clear and present danger that most people are unaware of. And so the importance of labeling is to protect the innocent and the under-informed, which is most people in the country, or perhaps not, since over 80% of them apparently are saying that they want labeling of genetically modified foods, according to the polls by the CBS, New York Times, and so forth, which is in contradiction to the results obtained by the University of Hawaii study. If you look at it, it's pretty obvious why those results came up differently. There were leading questions in the telephone polls that could have altered the response of the respondents. The bottom line is, this needs to be treated much the way the tobacco risk was treated when the evidence of harm was coming out. You wouldn't have asked the smokers, do you think that tobacco and cigarettes should be labeled? When they've been propagand-- they had been told for decades and decades that even doctors smoke because it's healthy. Okay? That was the propaganda back then, leading up until the time when finally the evidence was coming in that tobacco was harmful. And it's the role of the government to step in when the evidence is there to protect the innocent and to, in this case, labeling, I think, not only needs to be labeling of the presence of genetically modified foods and food ingredients, and even residues. Simply residues can be problematic. But also a warning, a proactive warning, that there can be harm from ingesting genetically modified foods. And I won't have time to fully go into the next point I wanted to make, but one of the arguments that I saw previously was, in opposition of labeling, is the doctrine of substantial equivalence that is, has been used in the past at the FDA. I think it's really important to look into how that doctrine found its way into FDA policy. It was not from decades of review of scientific research. It happened by fiat. It just was an assertion, and it happened in the '90s when a former Monsanto attorney had a prominent position in the FDA. And you can find more information on wikipedia.org. Just type in substantial equivalence, and you'll be shocked by what you read.
Mr. Moorhead, we thank you for the comments and your testimony that you shared with the committee this morning. Before we ask Ms. Kennedy to come up, I'm going to give the gallery as well as the committee a short recess. We shall stand in recess till 10:35. Policy Committee shall return to order. We are in the testimony phase of the morning's agenda. Your chair estimates at least about another hour of testimony, which will leave the committee basically 15 minutes to try and do its business for the day. You know we have litigation matters that deals with lawsuits against the county that the chair would like to pick up. And so we may be adjusting how we do the business of the committee depending when we complete testimony for this morning's agenda. Okay, members, we shall now have Ms. Jennifer Kennedy come up, please, to share her comments, and she will be followed by Brent. I'm going to murder this Fategoni, F-A-T-E-G-O-N-I. My apologies for mispronouncing your--
Hello, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. I just wanted to say that I think it's really important that our food is labeled. We should have a choice. I just recently gave birth to my first child, and it's a beautiful experience to see such pure life. And I feel that life on earth is really great, and we should have a choice if we want our food to be altered with, if we want our genetics to be tampered with. And this is a serious issue. It's not just pesticides leaching into the water that dissolve over time. It's something that is permanent, and it needs to be stopped now before it's too late. So please take this seriously, and please do your research, because it's very scary what is going on out there. Thank you.
Can we ask you to please state your name for the record?
Oh, my name is Jennifer Kennedy.
Thank you so much, Ms. Kennedy. Members, any questions for the lady on her comments to you this morning? Have we not, Ms. Kennedy? Thank you so much for sharing your thoughts. Brent? And following the gentleman will be Paul Kohler.
My name is Brent Fatigoni. I live here on Maui. I'm here to speak against, or to speak for labeling GMO foods. One of the reasons I feel that way is because it's a fact that the company that is producing these genetically modified foods is the same companies that has been producing chemicals for like the last 30 years, like Agent Orange in Vietnam, DEET, and other ones that are just, they lied to us about, and they said that they wouldn't harm our soldiers and they wouldn't harm our people, just like the food, they're saying it's not going to harm us. So I think that it should be labeled so we know that it's going to harm us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Fatigoni. Any questions for the gentleman? Have we not? Thank you for your presence. Paul Kohler, who will be followed by Harold Kaiser.
Vice Chair Carroll, members of the committee. My name is Paul Kahler. I'm the Director of Hawaii Community Affairs for Monsanto. You have my written testimony in opposition to the proposed resolution before you. In addition, I'll also be offering for your consideration several things that you might find helpful as you grapple with the proposal you have before you today. Now, we'll leave 16 copies with the clerk.
Thank you.
In the 15 years since the first commercially available GE crop was planted, some municipalities, counties, or even states have considered requiring mandatory labeling of GE products. As an example, in 2002, certain groups paying, or using paid signature gatherers placed Measure 27 on the ballot in the state of Oregon. Measure 27 was in many ways quite similar in language to the proposed resolution you have before you. Although these groups cited polls claiming over 90% of consumers would support mandatory labeling, when the votes were finally tallied, Measure 27 was overwhelmingly defeated by over 70% of the electorate. On the grounds, or the grounds for the public's defeat of this measure may have interest to this committee, and I'll share just a few of those with you. Number one, it was misleading. Number two, it had huge cost implications. And number three, voters thought it was redundant and unnecessary. Dr. Lester Crawford, Deputy Commissioner of the FDA, said in part in a letter addressed to the governor of the state of Oregon, I quote, "FDA objects to the pending ballot initiative requiring the mandatory labeling of foods and food additives sold in Oregon as it does not promote material facts concerning the safety or nutritional aspects of food and may be misleading to consumers," end quote. Dr. Thomas Reardon, past president of the American Medical Association and a physician in Oregon, said, I quote, "Measure 27 is a badly-written food labeling law that would do nothing to protect public health and safety. And just as red tape and bureaucracy increase the cost of health care, Measure 27's red tape and bureaucracy would certainly increase food costs and taxpayer costs," end quote. The USDA, through the National Organic Program, already has a mechanism in place via the USDA Certified Organic Label in which those consumers who want to purchase-- Certified Organic Label, in which those consumers who want to purchase foods that were produced without the use of certain pesticides, irradiation, certain fertilizers, and GE ingredients can do so. Therefore, special mandatory labels for GE foods would not only be costly, but also unnecessary and redundant. Hawaii already imports eighty-five to ninety percent of our food products. That's a significant number for us. But it constitutes less than one-half of one percent of the total U.S. grocery market. Proposals such as the one before you today do nothing to lessen our dependency on imports, and in fact, may have the unintended negative consequence of increasing the cost of food for Hawaii's residents and/or reducing the availability of food if the suppliers choose to stop selling their products in Hawaii rather than comply with such an onerous labeling law. For these reasons, we humbly ask that you do not support the passage of this resolution. Thank you for the chance to testify.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kahler, for your testimony to the committee. Members, questions for the gentleman on testimony presented to you this morning? Ms. Cochran?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for being here and sharing. Just wondering, you know, the dollar amount the company makes overall, and you're saying cost prohibitive, can you just elaborate on why it would be?
Well, the estimates that were made in 2002 during Measure 27's hearing depended upon what the families were spending on their grocery dollars. The estimate for the additional labeling cost in Oregon was on the order of four and a half to five percent of the food budget. Now, in today's dollars, I couldn't tell you what that number is. Is it going to be similar? Probably. Will it be more? I don't know. Less? I don't know. But I would guess, it's been nine years since 2002, food costs have gone up, processing costs have gone up. I can't help but believe that the cost of labeling would also have gone up.
Ms. Cochran?
And you said this Measure 27 in Oregon was overwhelmingly supported by the people, ninety percent, but then it died in the ledge.
Well, the groups that were proposing that the ballot initiative be put on the ballot claimed that ninety percent would support mandatory labeling. When it went to the general public for a vote, seventy percent of the electorate said, over seventy percent of the electorate said no to mandatory labeling. And that's in the material that I'll leave with you.
Oh, you'll submit, submit. Okay.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And the other question, if I may--
No, she asked you, you answered her question. She asked, "Members, further questions for the gentleman on testimony presented to you at this time?" Okay, have we not? We thank you for your testimony this morning, Mr. Kahler.
Do I leave these with--
Yes, the staff will be happy to assist you, and once more, we'll make sure that all committee members receive a copy of your submittal. Thank you very much. Harold Kaiser, followed by Cleo Wilson.
Aloha, and good morning--
Good morning.
Chair Okama, Vice Chair Carroll, and council members. My name is Harold Kaiser, and I'm here today to give personal testimony in opposition to this County Communication Number 11208 on labeling. This testimony does not represent the official position of the university. It's, this is my position as an agricultural scientist with thirty-three years of experience in USDA and University of Hawaii. I submitted copies of the testimony for you on what I thought were some of the salient features and questions on this issue. And I'm, in the interest of time, I'm not going to read that verbatim. I think you will see that most of the controversial points are addressed there. I would like to bring up that in reading over the resolution, there's no mention made of the cost that, you know, throughout the whole food system, that this labeling, this labeling would bring forth, and this cost would surely be passed on to the consumer. Now, for other voluntarily labeled markets, such as for the kosher foods, organic, or halal foods, those extra costs of keeping the identity preserved, keeping things separate, those are paid by the people who are proponents and who want those foods in the market system. In this case, most of those who want GE foods labeled do so because they want to avoid them. However, the substantial cost of that is going to be passed on the consumer, and I think we have to ask if that's going to be fair, especially for the very poor consumers to raise their food bill. Now, another point is that all the scientific studies have been done, I think before I testified, I've passed out some nine hundred peer-reviewed publications on this. Basically, they show that the method of breeding does not alter the safety or the health of the food. It's the product. And that's currently how all GM foods have been evaluated before going to market, the safety of the product. I would like to just finally give a few examples of process, some very common products, with perhaps some surprising processes used in their breeding, that they're not labeled, and they haven't even been evaluated for safety as GM foods have. Probably the most common rice in the western region of the U.S. and the Pacific is calros. It's a mixture of several strains of rice. A couple of those strains were developed through gamma radiation, right, for short stature and for day-neutral flowering. This is very common. You're not going to find any processed label on here that says, "This was developed with gamma radiation," and you can get it as organic.
Yeah, your time is up, Mr. Kaiser.
Okay.
So we thank you for your testimony. Committee, any questions for the gentleman? Ms. Cochran?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Kaiser, for being here. Mr. Kaiser, you mentioned, you know, safety of the product.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm hearing a lot of testimony today, where's the safety of the people, animals, and environment? Is that also high priority for the company and for the production of this product?
The safety of the environment and the animals are, the food safety product is, that's under the authority of FDA and then AFIS, and AFIS and EPA cover those, the environmental aspects. Yeah, so, yes, those, that is regulated by other government agencies.
Thanks, Mr. Kaiser. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Cochran, for the, any further questions for the gentleman? Have we not, Mr. Kaiser? Thank you for your presence this morning. Cleo Wilson is next, and following her will have Ben Wilson.
Hi, my name is Cleo Wilson. I come here today, good morning, every single one of you. First off, I want to thank you for being here today and doing the work that you do. I'm really proud to see you sitting here today. Your life to me is precious. Every single one of your lives here, your family's lives are precious to me. And I came here today as just a fellow human being who has an allergy. I get an anaphylactic reaction to some food products, and it's a really scary thing. I didn't come here to, I wasn't paid to come here today by any corporation. I'm a private citizen. I'm also a mother with a child on the autism spectrum, who is thankfully doing well because he is off GMO foods. I'm also a nurse, so I represent the healthcare industry, taking care of veterans in nursing homes. So I also feel like I represent them, too. And I'm here to ask you to mandate food level, I mean, mandate food labeling on this level, but also to support it on the state level so that we can take it federally. Genetically engineered food is toxic. And from my experiences in Colorado with the massive peanut allergies, peanuts being prohibited in all schools in the Denver area, I come here, and my child, you know, can bring a peanut butter sandwich here. And I'm grateful that Hawaii is a refuge, you know, to low allergens right now. So let's exercise caution because you are a good example to be ambassadors, to represent us, the people, you know, in the state level, to the federal level, and say, you know, this is not good for our people. The rest of the world, you know, they're not doing this, and it's just common sense. And if it's a dead, dead body in front of you, you want to bury it and get rid of it, we don't want to keep it with us. It's insidious and terrifying that any time I can eat something and come down, my heart can try to stop. The fluids flush into my body. I turn red. My body temperature turns a hundred and five degrees, and I burn from the inside out. My hair fell out. It's, I was in the ER, you know. It's a very scary thing. This is very real. And I'm representing that person, that a random thing came down the turnpike and said, "You have a deadly allergy." So I'm here representing that and my son, and I'm out of time. So I appreciate you, and I hope you can get your work done today.
Thank you so much for your testimony this morning. Ms. Wilson, any questions for the lady? Thank you very much for your presence. Ben Wilson is next, and following him, we have Brian Murphy.
Aloha, council members.
Good morning.
My name is Ben Wilson, and I'm here to speak out against genetically modified foods. For one thing, it is completely wrong for any person, corporation, or other organization to patent the genome of any species. That said, all GMOs should be banned. Short of that, they should absolutely be labeled so that people can make the informed choice and vote with their feet. GMO foods have failed to deliver. The promise was that crop yields would be higher. That hasn't happened. Crop yields are about eighty-seven percent of the time consistently lower than with non-GMO crops. The GMO strains can easily escape from the areas where they're being grown and contaminate non-GMO crops. And oftentimes, crops that are supposed to be organic and non-GMO can in fact be contaminated with GMO crops. In several tests, levels up to thirteen percent of supposedly non-GMO crops came out to be contaminated with GMO species. And in terms of the cost to the earth and the cost to farmers, and the cost to nations, nations that have been subsidizing this have basically lost a lot of money on it. They've been subsidizing it in massive scales. Farmers have, have lost a lot of money in their livelihood farming GMO crops around the world. In fact, between the years of 2001 and 2005, approximately, in fact, over thirty-two thousand farmers in India committed suicide because they were not able to make ends meet, and they were not able to provide for their families. Their debt loads were mounting, and they just weren't bringing in the income. This is because the crop yields were lower, and their profits ended up being about forty percent lower than, than they had been previously. And since they can only use seeds that are solely owned by a particular company, that company has the ability to raise the prices it will, which is what they did. And they just were not able to, to keep going on. They became depressed and committed suicide. And GMO crops are basically designed for large-scale industrial production. And that's, in that way, they're completely wedded to fertilizers and fossil fuels. So I believe they are wrong for the state of Hawaii, and they should be labeled.
Thank you very much for your testimony, Mr. Wilson. Committee, any questions for the gentleman? Have we not, Mr. Wilson? Thank you for your presence. We appreciate your patience. Mr. Brian Murphy is next, and we have, after him, we will have Mary Overby.
Aloha, my name is Brian Murphy. Why label GMO foods? We are confronted with what is undoubtedly the single most potent technology the world has ever known, more powerful even than atomic energy. Yet it is being released throughout our environment and deployed with superficial or no-risk assessments, as if one needs to worry an iota about the unparalleled powers to harm, to harm of life this would do. This week in the Journal for Pediatrics, levels of pesticides commonly encountered across the country in food, as well as around the home, are significantly increasing children's risk of developing Attention Deficit Hypoactive Disorder, ADHD, and could be causing an increase in the number of children living with this condition, according to a new research published in the journal this month. It was mainly exposed through food. Diet is the driver. For most people, diet is the premier source. It's been known that people who switch to an organic diet down the levels of pesticide byproducts in their urine by eighty-five to ninety percent. According to some agricultural experts, GMO foods are being designed to sell Monsanto's herbicide Roundup and the patented Roundup Ready jeans, now spliced into millions of acres of corn, cotton, soybean, canola, and sugarbees. A 2009 study showed that in thirteen years, Roundup Ready crops increased herbicide use by three-hundred-and-eighty-million pounds. I was doing some research for my testimony for this today, and I found an article about, in the Maui Times, which you can all believe, "Council Takes Up GMO Tarot Ban." Now, this is a quote. Monsanto Hawaii Vice President of Research and Business Operations, Fred Perlich, called the legislation "a special-interest crusade against choice." "Special-interest crusade against choice," this comes from Monsanto, that spends over three million dollars a year to lobby for their special-interest crusade of controlling the world's supply of food seed. Their total business plan is against choice of food, GMO or nothing. So here we have the Vice President of Monsanto crusading for choice. "I agree that we need choice, the choice to put the health of all our children and grandchildren before the profits of a multinational corporation." Another quote, "My concern is that we start it, we start banning something before there is need for it," said Perlich. Here we see Mr. Perlich feels you should wait for you, your children, and your grandchildren to have problems before banning anything. Another quote, when asked by Nishiki about the European ban against genetic, genetic modification, Perlich said that there's a whole host of political and industrial competition behind the ban. If you check what's going on in Europe, the bans they pass is on health issues and the lack of research by independent researchers. The people are behind the ban. And then last but not least, the bill opponents also said GMO prohibits, would prohibit, could start, stunt Hawaii's lucrative bioagricultural industry from taking further hold in the state. This is a good thing. Maui has always been known as Maui Nokaui. It is the best. What will happen to Maui's name once the world knows that we are the producers of the world Frankenstein seeds?
Mr. Murphy?
Thank you.
Your time is up. We thank you very much for sharing your thoughts. Members, any questions for Mr. Murphy on testimony presented to you? Thank you very much for your comments this morning, Mary Overby, and we'll have, followed by Federal Reserve Brown.
Aloha.
Good morning.
I am Mary Overby. I've been a businesswoman on Maui for twenty years, and--
Can you bring the microphone a little down, Ms. Overby? Thank you.
Ah, yes. And I'm also the widow of a disabled veteran. And as a longtime caregiver, I know the importance of nutrition to support the immune system. And recently, reading about all this genetically modified food just seems like a nightmare science fi, scenario to me. So I applaud your efforts to require labeling of this genetically modified food so at least we will know what we are giving the people that we love. And may I submit the rest of my testimony?
Yes, you may. We'll be happy to assist you with our staff. Thank you very much for your comments. Any questions for the lady on her testimony? Have we not, Ms. Overby? Thank you so much for being here this morning. Federal Reserve Brown, and he will be followed by Glenda Frederick.
Good morning, counsel. May I resent my testimony to Pili Aloha Tevez, who needs to go to work and get moved to the back of the line?
Excuse me, what was your request again, please?
Pili Aloha Tevez is here to testify, and she needs to go to work. She's going to miss her chance, and I-- She's going to miss her chance, and I'm not in a hurry to go to work. Can I go to the end of the line, or...
Sure, I'll be happy to accommodate that.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
My name is Pili Aloha Tevez. I will email you my testimony and the research that I have done on the topic that I'll be speaking of this morning. I had an opportunity to see Danielle Downing. She's an apiary specialist with the Department of Agriculture in the Pest Control Division, and her office is on Hawaii Island. I saw her presentation that was given at Maui Community College on Akaku recently. In the presentation, she mentioned that Hawaii Island has a 55% decrease in their beehive population in the year of 2010. And this information was gathered through the Hawaii Island Apiary Co-op that they put together on their own, it's all grassroots. The massive deaths and decline of the bee colonies in Hawaii have cultural, ecological, environmental, and economic impact in this island nation. GMO and Terminator seeds are presently being endorsed by governments and forcibly utilized as our primary agricultural needs. Biotech conglomerates create seeds that reproduce only under certain conditions, often linked to the use of their own brand of fertilizers and pesticides. The GMO plant proteins make the pollen sterile. The bees will become malnourished, ingesting something that is dead, and die of illness due to the lack of nutrients and the disease which are synonymous with colon cancer in humans, as studies have shown, and I have all of that research. The GMO leads to compromised immune systems, circulatory issues, and digestive shutdowns in the human population, as studies have shown, as well as the bees. Studies also show an increased academic of bee colony collapse that has arisen with the use of GMO plants, their fertilizers, and insecticides. And there's a lot of information and studies that were done throughout North America on this. There are many producers of berries and almonds in California that have to have their bees brought in. They purchase the use of beehives from these apiaries so they can come in and have their, their crops pollinated because there's no, no bees. I'm real quick. The impact of the bee colony collapse would mean devastation to our unique ecosystem in these islands, economic issues that could be catastrophic for our diverse agricultural system. The only alternative, the only alternative, is a complete ban of all GE and GMO testing, production, and consumption in this island nation. And my last point, in two weeks after Monsanto developed the Verona BeeMite pest strip, the BeeMite magically appeared in all of the countries across, across the globe.
Ms. Tevez, we thank you very much for sharing your thoughts with the committee this morning. Any questions for the lady, Ms. Cochran?
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Tevez, for being here. There is another testimony submitted about bee population dying and declining here on Maui. Was Ms. Downing privy, or did she elaborate on that, or just Hawaii Island?
She, they had the, the numbers for Hawaii Island, and she was here to kind of get the local guys together and to just kind of start to establish a database, and, which I think is great. But I also feel that there is, you know, a lot of misconception. They're looking at specific issues, and I don't think GMO is one of them, and it really, really needs to be addressed. Because we've all seen the B movie, yeah, with, what's his name, Tom Hanks?
Thank you, Ms. Tevez.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Any further questions for the lady members? Having none, Ms. Tevez, thank you very much once more. Glenda Frederick, please. And following Ms. Frederick will be Anne Provost.
My name is Glenda Frederick, and I'm a concerned citizen. I think that this is an issue of human rights being violated. We have a right, we have a right to clean air, and we have a right to pure and natural foods. Why are other countries banning Monsanto and GMOs, and also many pesticides that are used here are banned in other countries? Why are we standing here like beggars, begging for human rights in this great country of America? Over and over, this information is given, given out, yet no action is taken. To do things only when it involves money instead of what's best for the whole is the worst human stupidity there is, and this has the longest repercussions. Think of your grandchildren and great-grandchildren, and what kind of future will they have? Think of yourselves. You're breathing the air, you're eating the foods that's being tampered with by scientists. We can take the power away from the corrupt, greedy corporations, organizations like Monsanto by not, by not purchasing their products. Monsanto does not care about the health of the people or about our environment. Are we a democracy? The key words here are human rights.
Thank you very much for your comments, Ms. Frederick. Any questions on testimony given? Thank you for your presence. We'll have Ms. Provost, and she'll be followed by Irene Bowie.
Aloha, my name is Anne Provost. I gave testimony last time, and I really wanted to instill more of my personal experiences of my freedom of choice and the right to life. This is being manipulated by this corporation who clearly didn't have the right to manipulate God's creation in the first place. And so far, my own personal choices have been to have the most organic, the most natural forms of food. I had a personal experience of being over vaccinated as a child, and it caused me to want to know more about educating myself. I went to Ann Wigmore's place in Boston, Massachusetts, which had, it's only for terminal cancer patients. And the first thing they do is take you off all pharmaceuticals, all toxic food, and put you on a clear, organic, raw foods diet. And she has 85% cure rate. What else are we not being told by the government, the FDA? There's also Dr. Burzinski's testimony. He has had the cure for cancer since 1977, but the FDA kept him in court, and, and he wasn't able to do his work, only kept in Houston, Texas, where he's, has his, he's doing his work right now, and curing people, same thing, using Astia Plastons, same thing. Another movie, again, called Beautiful Truth, says the same thing, takes all people off, all pharmaceuticals, all pesticides, artificial this, preservatives, that, and people are self-involving themselves, not knowing that they're actually killing themselves, poisoning themselves, giving themselves the diseases. So not even labeling genetically modified foods is showing us like, what, we don't even care about our people, our own selves. I personally choose not to have any of that crap in my diet, and, and wish that everybody else can have the same opportunity. We're given, we have the right, it's our right to life, and you can't even give me that, knowing that the GMO pollens are in the air, they're getting in our, our wells and our oceans, and we, we can't fight that. How do we fight the bees traveling seven miles to our organic gardens? We can't have safety in our own things. And then this big corporation, we're being manipulated economically and environmentally, we're being like slaves unto them. So please, with all your knowledge that, and, and research that we're providing for you, even get more so, because you're representing us as people to make this not just labeling, but totally banning GMO from the islands and all the repercussions thereof, that's happening for us and our future. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Provost. Any questions regarding her testimony? Ms. Provost, thank you once more for being here. Irene Bowie, and following Ms. Bowie will be Warren Watanabe.
Aloha, Chair and committee members. My name is Irene Bowie. I'm Executive Director with Maui Tomorrow Foundation. Labeling of GMO products equals freedom of choice for consumers. A recent March 2011 MSNBC Health Poll asked if GMO foods should be labeled. Nearly 90% of respondents, more than 9,000 votes, answered yes. A similar ABC poll found 93% supporting mandatory labeling, and a New York Times poll found 87% in support of GMO labeling. The labeling of GMO products was proposed in the Maui Island Plan itself. It appears the current council committee adopted this policy without changing the language. In Chapter Four of the Maui Island Plan, under Objective One of Diversified Ag Section of Economic Development, Number 352 states, "Work with the state to regulate and monitor GMO crops to ensure the safety of all crops and label all GMO products." The countywide policy plan has policies regarding the fields themselves. Policies on GMOs under Economic Development Section include, "Enhance county efforts to monitor and regulate important agricultural issues, maintain the genetic integrity of existing food crops, encourage methods of monitoring and controlling genetically modified crops to prevent adverse effects, and under implementing actions, it states publicly identify with signage and other means the field locations of all genetically modified crops. It also states, create agricultural parks in areas distant from genetically modified crops." Maui Tomorrow supports this resolution. It's an ethical issue. Consumers should be informed so that they can make a choice in the products they buy. And mahalo for considering this resolution.
Thank you so much for your comments, Ms. Bowie. Members, any questions to the lady regarding testimony presented this morning? Having none, thank you for being here. Warren Watanabe, and he will be followed by Nelson Waikiki Jr.
Morning, Chair Hokama, members of the committee. My name is Warren Watanabe, Executive Director of the Maui County Farm Bureau. We did submit testimony through email, and hopefully you all have copies of it, so I won't read it. I just want to reiterate that the Maui County Farm Bureau does oppose this measure, and that for us as an organization, we do represent a wide diverse of different sectors in Maui County, and that we believe that for the food producers, for our farmers and ranchers, we need to have an option of choice of methods of production. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Watanabe? Having none, thank you for being here, Mr. Watanabe. Nelson Waikiki Jr., and he will, is Mr. Waikiki here? Okay, last call for Nelson Waikiki Jr. Okay, if not, we'll move on. Tonya P. Benito? Oh, Mr. Waikiki, there you are. Okay, I'm sorry. We'll give you your opportunity to share your thoughts, please.
Apologize for that, sir.
No problem.
Been waiting for a little while, so...
No problem.
Good morning. My name is Nelson Waikiki, to the chair and to those of you who are representing the people of Maui. I come here as the CEO of Open Water Company out of Lahaina, Kauhula Valley. The reason I come before you is because my business partner, President Barack Obama, signed a bill on the US law that allows indigenous people to start their own public water utility company, to profit and to compete within the market. Okay? Now, the reason why I say that is because we're talking about GMO, genetic mutated organisms. It's really important to understand what that really means. To me, that means death. Okay? Anything written on white paper with black ink, to me, is deceptive, practice...
Mr. Waikiki, you need to address your comments this week.
And because those things are deceptive practices, it creates uneasiness, it creates no clarity and validations. So some of the things that I'm dealing with is human rights violations. The other things that we're dealing right, with right now is the water issues. Also, the reason why these things are coming about is because there's no clarity, there's no validation, there's no conformity. And for Mr. Monsanto, bringing him a community speaker, I would think that's very absurd. Why? Because he hasn't made clear to the public that he not only has leases and lands and water in his business, and is not open to the public viewing. When you cannot see things of that nature, and you have things that are going on products that aren't being written down, then to me, that's pretty crazy, that we can't do and see these things. Secondly, the Hawaiians, the Hawaiian diet specifically is taro and fish. So all these other things that was brought in, in a foreign matter, I don't believe in at all. Okay? So genetic, no. Why don't we go GMO, God-made organisms, instead of sticking to the same thing over and over? Okay? We do that, I think, for the most part, we'll be fine. If we continue moving into things we don't even understand, words that you read on boxes that you don't even know what the heck they mean, rainbow flavon, phlexomaxis, whatever, doesn't matter to me. So if you're going to put something on labels, at the end of the day, please put the truth down, so I have a choice to decide if I want to stick that in my body or not. And if you can do that, then I think there's a possibility we could do business here. Then the, the, the community will have a very, a better way to decide what they want to do. Right now, it's obvious to me, of all the testimonies that I've heard today, everyone's confused. So Monsanto needs to do a better job in expressing what they're trying to say and what they're trying to do here on Maui. I, for one, am born and raised here. Secondly, I don't approve any of these activities, and anything that is causing injury by usage of water to these businesses is against the law. It's called the State Hawaii Water Code Law. Okay? So we need to follow law, encourage the enforcement of law in regards to the use of our water, in regards to producing crops, in regards to putting it up on the market for people to consume. And if we can do that, then there's a good possibility we could do very well here on Maui. Aloha.
Thank you so much, Mr. Waikiki. Questions for the gentleman on testimony he shared with you members? Mr. Waikiki, thank you once more for being here. We appreciate your comments. Tonya, or Tonya P. Benito? Okay, we'll move on, next to Jeremiah Naone. Is Mr. Naone here? Take your time, take your time. Aloha.
To the council members and chairperson, administration, corporation, and yes, and people. I listened once before, I had cancer. I still have my cancer. How many of you have cancer on the board right now? Anybody? You know what it is to go through it? It's painful. And that's, when I went to the City of Hope, I had to learn about this cancer. I had a blood type cancer. I lost six and a half inches of my height, and I studied it. So I have a passion for this. And this passion is that none of you, none of you catch this cancer. They say that liver cancer is up and arise about one out of every hundred people in America. In Maui, it's one of every four. That's one, two, three, four. One, two, three, four. About 11 of you today probably will end up with cancer. We can actually help ourselves to fight this thing. We have the opportunity to stop it. So why don't we just try to give people a chance to decide how to fight this cancer? One of the ways is label. Why not? Simple. Some say it's costly. Well, weigh it out. Death and money. In the Bible, it has Revelations. Either you want to worship Gog or Magog, which means... Either you're gonna worship God or Magog, which means either you're gonna worship money or God. You have to decide. And it really boils down to, are you really porno with yourselves and with people in your family? I think the issue really is between God and the devil. I know it sounds like, oh, you know, kind of crazy, that some of you don't believe in God. In fact, I believe that some of you don't believe that God belongs here, in this arena. But He does, and He's watching every single one of our actions. So I'm here just to sound the trumpet. The trumpet is, I prophesize that many of you will have cancer if you don't change your ways and start to label. You have to start to give people a choice. This is what God created us for. He gave us a choice to be free. Let's not use it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Naone, for your testimony this morning. Any questions for the gentleman, Mr. Naone? Thank you for being here. Cindy Naone, please. And following Ms. Naone will be Vincent Mina.
Aloha, everybody.
Aloha.
Cindy Kaowamanaone. I'd just like to start by, labeling is a good thing. But I want to go back in history.
Ms. Naone, I hate to interrupt. Can you speak?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So I want to go back in history. So since 1893, we all know, there's all kind of habits that have been happening. Plantation came in. Of course, you had job opportunity, but along came with that was all the poisons and everything else that happened. When they started the water ditches, they needed to control the grass that grew on the side. So what they did is spray. They had to keep that down. And to today, they still spraying East Maui irrigation. Now, all of those toxins end up in the water. They continued to spray when they started doing the sugar fields. You gotta keep the grass down, you gotta keep the weeds down. Farmers know this. So those farmers, taro farmers, because I believe in the 1970s, taro farmers started getting classes on how to use these poisons, roundups. I know my parents, my grandparents, my family. Now we step back and we take a look again, and start realizing, I think that wasn't a good choice. Because back then, it was said that if you use these poisons, you're never gonna know what the effect's gonna be. Maybe five years, maybe ten years, maybe twenty years down the road. But bring it to today, present, we know what the effects are. My husband has cancer. Cancer is on the rise on Maui, even perhaps in the Filipino community, basically because they're the ones that working in the plantation fields. I did a little research in the Maui News Archives. In 1951, there was only fifty-three cases of cancer. Ten years later, fifty-seven cases of cancer. Today, uncontrollable. Why is it, especially here in Hawaii? The poisons in the water, the sprays in the air, GMO foods, two-hundred-twenty-three million dollars in GE's seed industry, farm industry. Big money. But money and life of people. Labeling is the beginning, but GMO and GE does not belong here in Hawaii, and that's where I stand. Thank you.
Mahalo, Ms. Naone. Thank you for your testimony this morning. Any questions for Ms. Naone? Thank you, mahalo for being here. Vincent Mina, and following Mr. Mina is Amara Rochan.
Aloha, Council Chair. Aloha, Council members. My name is Vincent Mina. I'm here today representing Maui County Farmers Union and also State of Hawaii Farmers Union. I'm the President of Maui County Farmers Union and also Vice President of the State Farmers Union, and also as a small farmer. Earlier testimony that was given around pregnant women in Oregon finding BT in their bloodstream raised my attention because of knowing about, you know, basically BT is Bacillus thuringensis. As organic farmers know, that this is something that we utilize as in our toolbox as an insecticide, yeah, a natural-forming insecticide. It's a bacterium found in nature. Well, Monsanto has now taken that BT gene and spliced it to use it as an insecticide with their corn. And now, it being found in the bloodstream was very interesting because Dr. Natasha Campbell McBride, who is a PhD out of the UK, son was born autistic. And she changed her practice when this happened to find out what was causing this. And what she came up with was leaky gut syndrome. And leaky gut syndrome basically means is that you have undigested food gets into the bloodstream. And when undigested food gets into the bloodstream, or anything gets into the bloodstream that's not processed naturally, the white blood cells start to take over. And the white blood cells then become the digestive system. So what happens when that occurs is that we lose our ability to have a strong immune system, because our white blood cells are our immune system. So the body's beautiful in that respect, because it does have backup systems. But there's only so much the body can back up. And so leaky gut syndrome is a big problem in our environment, in our society these days, and it's causing a lot of problems. And, but people aren't understanding of it, and understanding the gravity of it, and don't really, can't really pinpoint things to that. But it's, the awareness is being raised as to the work of Dr. Campbell McBride. So I am in total support of GMO, but that is getting Maui organic. I feel that, you know, we have an ability here to have as many jobs as we need if we recycle our nutrients and support a production-based economy again. A production-based economy around diversified agriculture, not plantation agriculture, not monocropped agriculture. But we need to heal our land, and I see my red light blinking. So I just wanted to raise that awareness with you folks this morning. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mina, on your comments and thoughts to the committee. Is there any questions for Ms. Mina? If not, thank you very much once again for being here. Amara Rochan, and she'll be followed by Federal Reserve Brown. And before Ms. starts, I would ask that if there's anyone else wishing to provide testimony, please make that available, and we'll provide you with an opportunity.
Aloha, everybody.
Good morning.
My name is Amara Rochan. Thank you for being here and listening to us. It's a very big subject. I would like to bring the attention maybe on something a little bit different. I went to the Monsanto farm myself at some point. I live in Kehe. I've never even noticed it right before. It's on Kanani Road up there, behind a wire fence that looks very warlike. It looks like basically a weekend farm gentleman up there, about a hundred acres, maybe they own. Every acre has an alphabetic letter. Some of them are long like this, some of them are like this. Some of them are full grown, and some of them are already gone on the plant itself. Nothing has been, you know, it's just very small. So I would think that it would be so interesting for us as a population here, because this GMO thing is kind of a nightmare. If we could have somebody, maybe from the Maui News, create a really nice profound article about who they are, what they do. Is it true that they are growing an hepatitis C vaccine? Is that true, that they are going on hepatitis C vaccine on corn in the open air right in Kehe here? This is thing that we really have to know, because it should be, I think, in a lab, closed lab. Because we don't know what airborne, you know, particles like that can do on people. Some people think now that hepatitis C is airborne, which is kind of a nightmare too. But I don't see people falling in the street, you know, anywhere. Life seems to be normal. But since, it's just very important, and I think we should interview Mr. Fred Curly on television, maybe at Akaku, just put everything out. What is it so good for Maui here that we need to have either vaccine or GMOs corn? This food is just so poor, you know? Soy food is just not good for you, generally speaking. If you feed the poor population in the world on soy, they'll become really ridden with diseases. So we need to have, if it's an experiment on vaccine, we really need to have that in a lab, not in the open air. And there's all kinds of mysterious things that's running around, or there's lots of people working there. But actually, when I went, there was like about four Filipino people, an old truck and an old building. There was not much. But, you know, what's going on with past those walls, I don't know. If I breed, you know, I live in Kehe, half a mile from there. If I breed some of this pollen, how much do I need to breed in order to starting my immune system to react to it in some ways? So I would say boycott roundup, make Maui organic. You know, John Lennon said, remember when you talk about destruction, you can count me out. We live here because it inspires us, all of us. We have a responsibility as citizens here to really just get rid of the things that don't belong to this island. And I think, you know, growing beautiful organic food, making sure the prices are low so we can all afford the food as medicine, we will all have a better life. Okay? We need, we have safety regulations here about everything. But when it comes about regulations, about having, you know, GMOs grown into form in vaccines, we need to be told about that, okay? People come here seeking peace of mind, healthy environments. This is the work that all of us that live here needs to create, because we do live in paradise, and we need to keep it for our visitors. And we need to make everything more beautiful all the time, and more healthy, and then we'll be having a better life. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Rochan, for sharing your comments with the committee. Any questions for the lady this morning? Avina, thank you so much for sharing your thoughts. Federal Reserve Brown, please.
Thank you for the earlier concession. I'm again about the law, and we have in the United States strict laws regarding informed consent. So I would ask the council to revisit RFS Number 11-0001534. I have a letter here from the Maui County Council from Ken Fukuaka, if I could read it real quickly. It says, "Thank you for responding to our request for a copy of your letter, April 12, 2000, letter to the county council, which we received on July 1, 2011." I'd like to explain how a letter I hand-delivered here in seven copies on April 12, finally you received on July 11, or actually ask you for an explanation, which I know I won't get. But nonetheless, this letter, consisting of the following, went missing three times within your council chamber, even though I hand-delivered it. And it says, "Letter invite to Maui County Council from the Dioxin Investigation Network, North American chapter. All council members, hello." "We, the Dioxin Investigation Network, in conjunction with other community groups, wish to discuss the issue of violation of informed consent. To be specific, exposure to Monsanto genetically-modified substances, including pharmaceuticals, blowing freely in the wind across our island. We believe, after having sought legal advice, this to be a violation of informed consent, and being so is a criminal offense, not an environmental issue, or a civil medical issue, or a civil matter. There is great reason to discuss bringing pesticide regulation back down to a local level as has been done in many communities across the world, where awareness about the dangers of chemicals is grown, as well as the knowledge the so-called regulatory officials have become completely incompetent or corrupt. We have numerous people who would like to make testimony regarding this issue, of which I'm advised Mr. Mateo has decided there will be no discussion. We have decided there will be a discussion, as it affects all of our health and environment." Please RSVP at your earliest opportunity to discuss the important matter. Following your exception of County Council Request for Service Matter 1534 here, and with your documents. What happened was a succession of events happened where it was passed from the council, passed it to, I believe, the Environmental Department. Mr. Parsons then passed this issue on to Dr. Lauren Pang, who had to leave, but can confirm. He then passed it on to the Chief of Police and the Prosecuting Attorney, who went back and forth with me and the Dioxin Investigation Network for the next since July, over whether or not what Monsanto is doing is they're actually doing. And yet Monsanto does not deny doing what they're doing. Quite simply, if we had real police and a real prosecutor, we wouldn't be here today. Okay? These people are committing crimes by definition of law. Since the police and the prosecutors are letting us down, would you please pick up the ball?
Thank you very much for your testimony, Mr. Brown. Members, any questions for Mr. Brown on testimony presented? Avina, thank you very much for your thoughts. Members, we have had no further requests for testimony. With no objections, we will receive all written testimony that has been submitted for today's agenda items with no objections.
No objections.
Okay, so ordered, we will have a few minutes to try and get through the business of this meeting, of today's requirements. Okay, first up is Policy Item 2-20, Nomination to Boards, Committees, and Commissions. We have Mr. Molina, who is the Representative of the Administration regarding appointments and nominations to boards and commissions for the County of Maui. Currently before us, members, we have a consideration by Mayor Arakawa to appoint Anthony Vargas to the Animal Control Board for a term expired March 31, 2013. And this is to fill a vacancy due to a resignation. At this time, the Chair will ask Mr. Molina if he has any additional comments to share with the committee. Mr. Molina?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning, committee members. As you've seen your binders, Mr. Vargas is applying for the, to fill a vacancy on the Animal Control Board due to the resignation of Rosanna Kabatic. And Mr. Vargas is a passionate lover of animals, and he's also very committed to serving the community in this capacity. And even though he was not required by the committee to be here to respond to questions, he did insist on coming here, so he is in the gallery. If the committee members, you yourselves, Mr. Chairman, would like to ask him any questions as it relates to his application to serve on this board and commission. And he did provide additional information at your request, Mr. Chairman, which is in your binders with regards to his background. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you so much. Members, do you have any questions or comments regarding the nomination of Mr. Vargas for the Animal Control Board, term expired March 31, 2013? Okay, have we no?
The Chair, sorry.
Yes, Ms. Cochran?
Is this, were you asking also to ask questions of the applicant?
If you would like, we can request Mr. Vargas to come forward. If there's a question a member of the committee would like to forward to him, I'm happy to ask, request his presence.
Yes, please.
Okay, then if Mr. Vargas would please come forward to the podium, I would appreciate that.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Vargas. We thank you for being here. And Ms. Cochran, would you like to present your question, please?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Vargas, for being here. And so I think it's just kind of a common question for all people seeking nomination to such a board. It's voluntary, and so thank you for that. But just exactly what do you bring and why you're interested in being on the board?
I wanted to give back to the community, you know, what I can. Some old-school knowledge on growing animals, raising animals. And I just wanted to bring back, you know, your present time, which I feel like is not here anymore. People is out of touch with the community. That's what I want to bring back. That's what I want to bring back to this board.
And you're-- thank you. And so your past experiences, I suppose you feel you have skills--
Yes.
--to do the responsibility at hand?
Yes, ma'am.
And what exactly type of skills?
Like I said, I raised numerous animals, cattle, from a little kid on up. I was the vice president for Future Farmers of America for three consecutive years. I'd done numerous aquaculture workshops, animal workshops. And basically, I was just trying to bring back some common sense to the whole thing.
Thank you, Mr. Vargas. Thank you, Chair.
Does any member have additional questions for the gentleman, Mr. White?
Thank you. We've heard of additional problems with the leash law enforcement. What is your feeling about the enforcement of the leash law and keeping dogs under control?
There's no enforcement really with the leash law. I think we should enforce the leash law, but then let me back up some. I think the leash law problem is to do with your mandatory registration of your animals. There is such a big gap in between a neutered pet and an unneutered pet. So therefore, you get people that just don't care anymore about their animals. So of course, I support the leash law.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Is there any further questions from committee members for Mr. Vargas? If not, Mr. Vargas, thank you very much for being patient and awaiting this opportunity in a very long morning. Thank you so much. Okay, then there'll be no further questions for the gentleman. The chair would recommend approval of the nomination to the animal control board for Mr. Vargas for a term ending on March 31, 2013. So therefore, let's see. First, I'll ask for a motion to approve the nomination and to be placed on Exhibit A of the attached resolution. Mr. Carroll?
So moved.
Second?
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Carroll, seconded by Mr. Couch, to forward the name of Anthony Vargas to the council and to be placed on Exhibit A for approval.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes?
Would that be Exhibit B for approval?
Excuse me. Thank you, thank you. My era members, the chair will make his own friendly amendment. Mr. Vargas is currently on Exhibit A as under the nomination. The correct motion before you is to place the name on Exhibit B, which is to approve the nomination to the Board of Animal Control. And the motion was made by Mr. Carroll, seconded by Mr. Couch. We are under discussion. Is there any discussion on the motion? Having none, only fair of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Or say no. This motion passes with six ayes, three excused. There are Mr. Mateo, Mr. Victorino and Mr. Pontanilla. We'll move on to policy item 2-14.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Couch?
Do we need to pass the resolution? We just moved them to A, or to B. Now do we now need to pass the resolution?
I just made one motion.
Okay, all of them.
No amendments. We are now on policy item 2-14, members, which is another nomination to boards, committees and commissions. This one is specifically for the salary commission. We have a proposed resolution whereby the mayor is recommending the nomination of Edward Tamori to the salary commission for a term expiry March 31, 2012, due to a resignation to the commission. Mr. Molina, any comments regarding the nomination of Edward Tamori?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Tamori has provided additional information to the committee with regards to his experience and he is interested in serving out the rest of the term, which was vacated by the former commissioner, Julian Higa. And this term expiration would be on March 31, 2012. And I believe it should be in your binders about his previous experience in servicing many different organizations and he has had some financial background, serving as treasurer, I believe, for one organization as well. And the mayor would be certainly appreciative of your support.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Molina. Members, any comments or questions regarding the nomination of Mr. Tamori to Mr. Molina? Okay, if not, the chair is recommending moving forward and therefore the chair is open to a motion to forward to the council the appointment of Edward Tamori as a member of the salary commission for a term expiry March 31, 2012, and to have his name placed on Exhibit B. Mr. Carroll?
So moved.
Thank you. Second? I have a motion by Mr. Carroll, seconded by Ms. Baisa. Further discussion? Having none, only fair of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried with six ayes, three excused. We thank Mr. Tamori for his willingness and volunteers to serve on the salary commission and we thank Mr. Vargas to serve on the animal control board. And let me tell you, I haven't heard Future Farmers of America, that term in decades. So I commend him for being a-- someone that came from a great vocational program in the school system that we had. Okay, members, bringing forward now is item--
Policy--
Policy 31, which is from the United States Marshal Service to the Department of Police. You have county communications within your binder regarding a donation, which is a-- transmittal, attached with the resolution requesting authorization to accept a 2010 Ford Explorer valued at $35,000 to be used for the fugitive task force personnel, Department of Police. This morning, do we have-- well, we've got one of the chiefs here, so if you want to come forward, please come forward. If there's someone from Marshal's office, we welcome the U.S. Marshal's representative also regarding this matter.
Never seen a real marshal.
Just so I see, we also have a lot of Corporation Council and support regarding the litigation. The chair will express his thanks, but more than likely, we will not be able to take you up at this meeting due to requirements of additional council committee work in the afternoon. The chair will inform those that are here for litigation matter, policy 1-15 and 1-10. That is the chair's intention to place this on the October 5 committee agenda with two additional litigation matters and that whole meeting will be dedicated to lawsuits and litigation and claims against the county of Maui. So that will be for October 5. So I apologize and I thank those from Corporation Council and the supporting departments for being very patient with us today. Okay, at this time, chief, would you like to give us some comment regarding this donation from the U.S. Marshal Service?
Good morning, Chair and council members. This donation of this vehicle from the United States Marshal Service is in connection with the fugitive task force. They provided the vehicle to us to be used by our members assigned to the fugitive task force, as well as we can use it for other activities, police-related. That's pretty much it. It's a wonderful gift in these hard times. They're also providing us fuel expenses too for this vehicle, so, you know, what more can I say? It's a well-rounded gift that can be put to good use by our department.
Okay, if you could introduce the gentleman next to you, please?
Sorry, on my right is Lieutenant Richard Danny Dodds. He's the commander of our special response team who oversees the Maui contingent for the fugitive task force.
Okay, thank you very much. Would you care to share any comments regarding this consideration this morning?
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, council members. I really don't have anything else to add. Other, I think the chief said it all. It's a nice gift that the Marshal Service has provided for us, again, with paying for the fuel as well. It's wonderful. It's a brand-new vehicle. I really have nothing else to add.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate this consideration. Just for the committee's information, chief, if you could maybe give us some better understanding of what is the fugitive task force, please, so that we can kind of make connections with this donation?
If I may, I'll go ahead and answer that. The fugitive task force is basically, we have members from statewide, Kauai, Big Island, sheriff's service, even the sheriffs here on Maui. At times, I don't know if you've heard of, we have had operations where the task force have come on Maui and basically done a warrant sweep where we've picked up, but, you know, we've executed 70 warrants over a four-day period. And there are times as a task force, we get together at the same time, we also assist other islands with their warrants, their service of the warrants. So that is the primary function of the fugitive task force, is that we're able to help each other out statewide.
Thank you. Members, any questions regarding the consideration before you this morning? Any comments? Mr. Carroll, you have any questions or comments? If not, it is your chair's recommendation to forward to the council a resolution that authorizes acceptance of a nomination from the United States Marshal Service to the Department of Police, county of Maui pursuant to Section 13-8, revised charter of the county of Maui, 1983 as amended, and Chapter 3.56 Maui County Code. Mr. Carroll?
So moved.
Second? I have a motion by Mr. Carroll, seconded by Mr. Couch. Is there any further discussion on the issue or matter? Having not, only fair of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Or say no. Motion passes with five ayes, four excuses. Ms. Baisa, Mr. Mateo, Mr. Victorino and Mr. Pontanilla. Mr. Couch? Short recess, short recess. This policy committee shall return to order. Members, as your chair, and again, we are at bare quorum, not with five members. With no objections, the chair will defer policy item 1-15, which is under litigation, the settlement authorization regarding Mark Higa and Jasmine Higa versus David Royalty, county of Maui, et al., civil number 10-1-0373, subsection 3, to have that deferred to the next meeting on October 5, as well as policy item 1-10, under litigation matters, the settlement authorization regarding Stacy Pounder versus county of Maui, et al., civil number 09-1-0202-1. Is there any objections to the deferral?
No objections.
So ordered. We have one final item, policy item 3-3, which is the Hawaii State Association of Counties or HSEC, regarding the 2012 HSEC legislative package. We have three considerations. One is a proposed resolution, which is asking HSEC for approval for inclusion in the 2012 Hawaii State Associate Counties legislative package regarding a state bill providing the counties with a percentage of fines for uncontested traffic infractions. Two, a proposed resolution that also is attached, a state bill increasing the time for review of affordable housing projects submitted pursuant to Section 2 on H-38, Hawaii revised statutes. And third, a proposed resolution, which is with an attached proposed bill requiring the labeling of genetically engineered food products. Your chair is aware that they are differing points of view on this matter. However, because there is some time constraints on this committee regarding forwarding it to the HSEC committee, since anything that moves to the state legislature that has the state association or HSEC component must be approved by all four counties. If one county does not approve any of the three considerations that is currently being proposed by this committee, it will not go forward to the legislature as a state association proposal. It may be also still be forwarded by request by any individual member or as part of a consideration if it should be part of the Maui counties legislative package. It is your chair's recommendation at this time, because we are at bare quorum, that the chair would like this to be, have a consideration of the full body. It is your chair's intent to discharge this matter to the full council at the next council meeting, which is not next week, but the following one, for full council consideration and to discharge this committee of its further responsibilities on this matter. I believe we have vetted it very well. We have listened to testimony twice from concerned members of the community and organizations of the community regarding the advantages and disadvantages of this consideration. I believe that the committee has done its job, but since we're at bare quorum, I would prefer to discharge it at the next meeting for consideration before the full council. Is there any questions to you, Chair, regarding policy item 3-3? Okay, having no questions or concerns? Yes, Mr. White?
Just a question. Are these same three items being brought up in the other four counties or is this just our submittal to the HSEC for consideration?
The first two proposals, Mr. White, the uncontested traffic infractions, as well as the additional time for affordable housing projects, has been part of the HSEC proposal for a number of recent years. It is something that all four counties have continued to support and request the legislature's approval. The third one, I cannot speak for the sister counties, but more than likely, they will need to go through this similar process with their councils. And if, again, all four councils approve, then it will be included in the state association proposal.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Any further questions? If not, your chair is recommending deferral of this matter. Is there any objections to the deferral?
No objections.
Okay, so ordered. I thank you very much for your presence. It was a long day, but we heard a lot of comment regarding the items before this committee. I will again remind the members that October 5, I believe, is our next committee meeting. Your chair is going to have that dedicated to a whole bunch of litigation matters before us and the county of Maui. So be prepared to deal with lawsuits and claims before the county for the October 5 meeting. No further business of this committee. This meeting is adjourned.